My name is Ricardo Arroyo. I'm the City Council for District 5. I'm also the Vice President of the Boston City Council. Viewers can watch this council meeting live on YouTube by visiting boston.gov/council/tv, or rather, -council-tv. I would like to ask my colleagues and those in the audience to please silence their phones and electronic devices. Thank you for that. Please also be respectful and do not disrupt the meeting while you are here. If you are disruptive, you will be asked to leave. If you fail to comply, you will be escorted out. Please also note that according to city council rules, there are no signs allowed in the chamber. Mr. Clerk, will you please call the roll to ascertain the presence of a quorum?
Counselor Arroyo.
Here.
Counselor Baker.
Yeah.
Counselor Buck.
Present.
Counselor Braden.
Present.
Counselor Coletta. Counselor Fernandez Anderson.
Here.
Counselor Flaherty.
Yeah.
Counselor Flynn. Counselor Lara.
Here.
Counselor Lou Jean. Counselor Mejia.
Here.
Counselor Murphy.
Present.
And Counselor Worrell. A quorum is present.
Thank you. Can you please have the attendance records indicate that Counselor Lou Jean has joined us?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. I've been informed by the clerk that a quorum is present. This week's clergy is Reverend Dr. Kevin C. Peterson from the Metropolitan Baptist Church in Dorchester invited by Counselor Tanya Fernandez Anderson. Counselor Fernandez Anderson, would you like to come up to the podium and introduce our clergy?
Thank you.
Today, I invited Dr. Kevin Peterson, Reverend Dr. Kevin Peterson, to join us. The Reverend is an Associate Minister at Metropolitan Baptist Church in Dorchester. He studied philosophy and political science at Boston University as an undergraduate and has completed his master's degree in urban ministry at the Gordon Cornell Conwell Theologies Seminary. Reverend Peterson has been awarded a doctorate in human letters by the Whalen Baptist Theological Seminary for his work in the area of public theology and his work upon voter empowerment for Black people in racial reconciliation. He is known across the nation among activists and theologians. His opinions have appeared in The Boston Globe, The Philadelphia Inquirer, The Boston Herald, and Huffington Post. He is a host on a weekly radio show on Boston praise radio called Politics and Grits. He has lectured across the country and in Africa. He is a senior fellow at the Center of Collaborative Leadership at UMass Boston and is currently Associate Faculty at Boston University Center for Anti-Racist Research. He lives in Dorchester. Dr. Reverend Dr. Kevin Peterson, please join us. Welcome. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Will we rise, please? Oh God, you know that if we ever needed your grace, your power, your wisdom, your understanding, your mercy, then we sure do need them now. Oh Lord, we live within the circumference of your love. So Lord, we pray that every day we learn to love each other and that we grow daily in brotherly love and sisterly affection. Oh good God almighty, we cast our spiritual eyes across the broad ranges of this city, along the distinct neighborhood delineations, across the corridors of communities that comprise our marvelous municipality, across the political precincts, across the glowing brows of the diverse multicultural humanity that live and thrive within the gates of the city and who call this place Boston home. Lord, it is easy for us, we your children, to grow discouraged, easy for our joy bells to lose its resounding ringing, easy for our grape to turn to raisin. Because despite of the greatness of this city and despite our love for this place, a city on a hill, much pain and horror and hurt washed throughout its boundaries, shots fired outside of a school graduation in Charlestown, the bitterness and sense of loss that rise in the wake of gentrification and alienation in Southie, the ache of poverty experienced by youth in Mattapan, the searing cynicism about the blight and plight of urban life in Hamlets as disparate as Brighton is from Back Bay, as varied as Rosendale is from Roxbury, as distinct as Dorchester is from the downtown. It is within this context, Lord, the context of this pain, that you have instructed we, your children, to care for the least of these, the desperate, the daunted, the disengaged, the disillusioned, the discounted, the disenfranchised, the lost, the locked out, the those lingering precariously on the margins of life. Lord, the city councilors here in this chamber gather today as problem solvers. They have pledged in some ways to love justice, embrace mercy, and walk humbly before you. We pray for each and every one of them who have in some way committed themselves to the ideal and the idea of justice. Bless them with a deeper sense of caring and empathy. Bless them with an expansive vision of how they might do right. Bless them with an ever mindful intention of making the city every day a new democracy and worthy of life. And as we invoke both the Old Testament and the Gospels, let us not wait until when the prophets shall say that the harvest is past and the summer is ended and we are not saved. Let us instead, oh God, work together so that one day we may hear the benediction. Well done, my good and faithful servants. Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, if the council in all attendance will please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, indivisible, and just as it is.
Mr. Clerk, if you could please amend the attendance report to include Counselor Flaherty as being present.
Yes.
Thank you. Now, onto the First Order of Business, which is the approval of the minutes. Seeing and hearing no discussion on the matter, the Chair moves to approve the minutes from the last meeting as presented. All of those in favor of approving the minutes from the last meeting say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Thank you. The minutes of the last meeting stand as approved. Now, it's Communications from our Honor, the Mayor. Mr. Clerk, can you please read Docket 0762 and 0763 together?
Docket number 0762, message disapproving the annual appropriation and tax order for fiscal year 2023. Docket number 0480, passed by the City Council on June 8th, 2022. I am filing an amended annual appropriation and tax order. Docket number 0763, message in order for amended annual appropriation and tax order for fiscal year 2023.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, if you can please amend the council attendance records to reflect Counselor President Flynn has joined us.
Yes.
And if you can please assign Docket 762 and 763 to Ways and Means. Okay, hold on. Let me handle that then. On Docket 762, can you please assign that to Ways and Means and sign for further action? And, Mr. Clerk, if you can please read Docket 0764 and 0765 together.
Docket number 0764, message in order for confirmation of the renewal appointments of constables authorized to serve civil process upon the filing of their bonds for a period commencing May 1st, 2022 and ending April 30th, 2025. Docket number 0765, message in order for confirmation of the appointment of new constables authorized to serve civil process upon the filing of their bonds for the period commencing May 1st, 2022 and ending April 30th, 2025. Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Flaherty, Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice. Counsel Flaherty of the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just like to move for suspension of passage of 0764 and 0765. These are, this is for service of process in our city, which is a vital function, not just for the city's corporation, but also for the Housing Authority and our courts. So with that, I know that the 0764 are reappointments and 0765 are new appointments. These individuals obviously have passed all the necessary requirements and them and their businesses depend on these approvals. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Flaherty. We'll do 0764 first. Counsel Flaherty seeks suspension of the rules and confirmation of Docket 0764. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. The appointment has been confirmed. Counsel Flaherty seeks suspension of rules and confirmation of Docket 0765. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. The appointment has been confirmed. Mr. Clerk, please reflect the attendance that Counselor Coletta is present. Mr. Clerk, please read Docket 0766, please. Docket number 0766, the constable bonds of A Vanessa and LaRope and Carita Miles have been duly approved and received by the Collector Treasurer. Thank you. Docket 0766 is approved under usual terms and conditions. Reports of committee. Mr. Clerk, please read Docket 0432, please. Docket number 0432, the Committee on Government Operations, to which was referred on March 30th, 2022. Docket number 0432, message in order for your approval, a home rule petition to the General Court entitled Petition for a Special Law Regarding an Act Relative to 30B. Submits a report that the home rule petition ought to pass. Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Arroyo, Chair of the Committee on Government Operations. Counsel Arroyo, you have the floor.
Thank you, Counsel President Flynn. As Chair of Government Operations, I move to substitute Docket number 0432 with an amended draft, which can be found on your desk. The amended committee report includes added language from the administration for this home rule petition, which would effectively include the following agencies: the Boston Housing Authority, the Boston Planning and Development Agency, and the Water and Sewer Department, as well as the Boston Public Health Commission.
Mr. Clerk, we should, everyone should have the copy on their desk.
Yes.
Thank you, Counsel Arroyo. The Chair on Committee on Government Operations seeks acceptance of the committee report in passage of Docket 0423 in a new draft. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0423 has passed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
The committee held a hearing on June 10th, 2022, discussing the home rule petition sponsored by the mayor, which would give the city of Boston greater flexibility in awarding contracts to diverse small and local businesses. The proposal would raise the Massachusetts General Law Chapter 30B written quote "contract maximum" from $50,000 to the state's small purchase threshold as defined by the Operational Services Division for Contracts with Certified Minority and Women-owned Businesses. Currently, as written, Chapter 30B, Section 4, does not allow any preferences for disadvantaged, diverse, or small and local businesses. This proposal would allow a procurement officer in the city of Boston to seek written quotations from at least three disadvantaged businesses, diverse businesses, or small and local business enterprises as certified by the Massachusetts Supplier of Diversity Office or the city of Boston, effectively increasing opportunities and access to city contracting for minority and women-owned businesses. I'd like to thank my council colleagues who joined us, Counselors Mejia and Worrell. I'd like to also thank members of the administration, Sigandu, Chief of Economic Opportunity and Inclusion, Michael Miller, Director of Strategic Procurement Administration and Finance, and Andre Lima, Deputy Director of Supplier Diversity and the Boston Residents' Job Policy. During this hearing, we also heard from the advocates, and I would like to thank Kareem Kibordiak, Senior Policy and Advocacy Advisor for the Black Economic Council of Massachusetts, as well as the Lawyers for Civil Rights Boston for submitting written testimony in support of this home rule petition. During the hearing, we were able to hear from the administration that this home rule petition is an important tool in decreasing barriers to city contracting, especially considering the city of Boston's 2020 disparity study, which showed us that from 2014 to 2019, Black and Latinx-owned firms were awarded 1.2% of the $2.1 billion in city contracts for construction and professional goods and services. The administration explained that the written quote "contract process" is faster for staff than pursuing a full request for proposal and is less burdensome for small businesses. The committee discussed the importance of engaging with small businesses and the difficulties with supplier portal in efforts of simplifying the process, as well as changing the narrative by suggesting the promotion of the awards of contracts to small and diverse businesses in order to generate interest in applying for contracts or becoming a certified vendor. As I said earlier, this amended docket adds the following agencies to be covered in this home rule petition: the Boston Housing Authority, the Boston Planning and Development Agency, the Water and Sewer Department, and Boston Public Health Commission. These amendments only further contribute to the opportunities for certified minority and women-owned businesses and small and local businesses. Passage of this home rule petition would allow for more businesses to participate in city contracting and will allow the city to diversify the supplier chain and make greater investments in small businesses here in the city of Boston. I recommend that this amended docket ought to pass in a new draft. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counsel Arroyo. Docket, that's Docket 0432, has passed in a new draft. Mr. Clerk, please read Docket 0-
No, I don't think it, we voted on it before you spoke.
Yeah, I believe we voted on it before, before you spoke. Let me, let me, let me do the, let me do it again. All those in favor of passage of Docket 0432 as passed in a new draft, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Docket 0432 has passed in a new draft. Can we take a quick recess? Yes. We're back in session. Mr. Clerk, we're going to do a roll call vote on Docket 0432. Please call the roll. Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counselor Baker.
Aye.
Counselor Baker, aye. Counselor Buck.
Yes.
Counselor Buck, yes. Counsel Braden.
Yes.
Counsel Braden, yes. Counsel Coletta.
Yes.
Counsel Fernandez Anderson.
Yes.
Counsel Fernandez Anderson, yes. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Lara.
Yes.
Counsel Lara, yes. Counsel Lou Jean.
Yes.
Counsel Lou Jean, yes. Counsel Mejia.
Yes.
Counsel Mejia, yes. Counsel Murphy.
Yes.
Counsel Murphy, yes. Thank you. Again, Docket 0432 has passed in a new draft. Mr. Clerk, please read Docket 0433, 0539, and 0653 together. Docket number 0433, the Committee on Environmental Justice, Resiliency, and Parks, to which was referred on March 30th, 2022. Docket number 0433, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $350,000 in the form of a grant for the Massachusetts Diesel Emissions Reduction Act Grant, also called the DER Grant, awarded by the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection under a cooperative agreement with the United States Environmental Protection Agency. The purpose of the DER Grant is to reduce diesel emissions from the transportation sector. The funds will be used to purchase and deploy fuel-efficient school buses as part of the Boston Public School Fleet. Submits a report recommending the order ought to pass. Docket number 0539, the Committee on Environmental Justice, Resiliency, and Parks, to which was referred on April 27th, 2022. Docket number 0539, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $180,000 in the form of a grant for the Community First Partnership awarded by Mass Save to be administered by the Environment Department. The grant will fund outreach and engagement with environmental justice communities to drive increased awareness and measurable participation in energy efficiency programs. Submits a report recommending the order ought to pass. And docket number 0653, the Committee on Environmental Justice, Resiliency, and Parks, to which was referred on May 25th, 2022. Docket number 0653, message in order for your approval in order authorizing the Parks and Recreation Commission on behalf of the city of Boston to acquire by eminent domain taking two parcels on the western shore of Sprague Pond at 0-4 Lakeside Avenue in High Park as a permanently protected parkland to be known as the Sprague Pond Shoreline Reserve and to use community preservation fund monies appropriated to the Parks and Recreation Department to award damages as determined by the commission. Submits a report recommending the order ought to pass. Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Lara, Chair of the Committee on Environmental Justice, Resiliency, and Parks. Counsel Lara, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn. For Docket number 0433 and Docket number 0539, these matters were sponsored by Mayor Michelle Wu and referred to the committee on March 30th. A public hearing was held on Thursday, June 9th, 2022. We heard from De La Verne's Dennis Laus, the Director of Transportation for the Boston Public Schools, who gave the committee an overview of how the grant will fund 12 buses in an electric school bus pilot program expected to deploy during the school year 2022/23. 20 diesel buses are going to be removed from the city's fleet and replaced with fully electric school buses. Dr. Allison Brizius, Commissioner of the Environment Department, gave the committee an overview of the Mass Saves Community First Partnership Grant. The city of Boston has been selected for the Mass Saves Community First Partnership and will work with EverSource and National Grid to bring energy cost savings to residents, small businesses, houses of worship, and local nonprofits in East Boston, Roxbury, Dorchester, and Mattapan. All four neighborhoods are considered to be environmental justice communities who already pay into the Mass Save's program like everyone else, but historically experience disproportionately low participation rates. With intentional and targeted outreach to these communities, they're basically going to focus on the renters' residents whose primary language is not English, moderate-income residents defined at 60% to 80% of state median income, and small businesses. So the Community First Partnership is going to share energy efficiency opportunity with the residents, provide emission reduction cost savings, and increase comfort. Specifically, anybody who participates in this program is going to receive no-cost energy assessment to identify energy-saving opportunities, such as insulation, heating, and cooling equipment upgrades. Through this partnership, the Mass Save sponsor is going to offer 100% of the cost for all of the approved upgrades. So for Docket number 0433 and Docket 0539, as the Chair of the Committee on Environmental Justice, Resiliency, and Parks, I recommend moving the dockets from the committee to full council discussion and that this order ought to pass. President Flynn, would you like to take a vote on those two dockets before I share the third?
We could do that, sure. Thank you, Counsel Lara. We're going to now, we're going to take a vote on those two dockets, which is Docket Counsel Lara, the Chair of the Committee on Environmental Justice and Resiliency and Parks, seeks acceptance of the committee report in passage of Docket 0433. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The docket has passed. Counsel Lara, the Chair of the Committee on Environmental Justice, Resiliency, and Parks, seeks acceptance of the committee report in passage of Docket 0539. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The docket has passed. Counsel Lara, the Chair recognizes you in Docket 0653.
Thank you, President Flynn. So for Docket number 0563, this matter is also sponsored by Mayor Michelle Wu and was referred to the committee on May 5th. We held a public hearing also on June 9th, where we heard from Chief Reverend Maryama White-Hammond, Aldo Gearing, Senior Planner for the Boston Parks and Recreation Department, and Joseph Bagley, who is the city archaeologist. We, they basically gave the committee an update and overview on the process. Due to the legal constraint, the administration could not go into great detail concerning the status, but we heard from Representative Rob Consalvo, who testified in support of adding that, excuse me, testified in support of adding the number to the High Park Neighborhood Community Groups, who are also in support of the city's plan, including City Counselor Ricardo Arroyo, who represents this district for Sprague Pond. Docket 0653 is basically an order where the Parks and Recreation Commission, on behalf of the city of Boston, would, for the community preservation purposes of providing a park, passive recreation, natural, historical, cultural, and archaeological resource conservation, and public access to the Great Pond, known as Great Pond, would be authorized to take by eminent domain in accordance with the law as it states here. I'm not going to read that out for y'all. 0-4 Lakeside Avenue in High Park. So the city of Boston would be taking 0-4 through eminent domain. So we heard from these folks. I am recommending that this order ought to pass. One of the concerns that I had during the hearing, we heard from the owner of the parcel, who came to testify and shared concern about the process, including a lot of public testimony. And I shared my concern with the administration about ensuring that the owner of the plot would be properly compensated. I come from a neighborhood that was decimated to basically put a highway through it, and a lot of it was done through eminent domain. So I had a lot of reservations about hearing the process for the city. The administration could not share publicly what they were offering the owner of the parcel because they're still in negotiations. But after having a private conversation with Chief Maryama White-Hammond, I am convinced that the administration is going to properly compensate Mr. Brown, and I am recommending that this order ought to pass.
Thank you, Counsel Lara. The Chair recognizes Counsel Arroyo. Counsel Arroyo, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Counsel Lara. I just want to, as the district in which this falls, I want to give some background on this. The Sprague Pond Shoreline was privately owned for a long time and maintained as a park for locals in that area. It was sold to two gentlemen who, due to the rising cost of housing in the city of Boston, actually believed that it would be cheaper for them to just build their own homes on this land. And then there went, say, back and forth with local activists and organizers and community folks about the importance of this specific location as a site that was once the site of the 54th Regiment, that has actual documented by the city archaeologists, former tribes, native tribes, who stayed in those areas to preserve this permanently. My understanding, as I support this project, and I've supported it in terms of the eminent domain aspect of this, as I've supported this since my election, is that they will be fairly compensated for the land of which they purchased. They have not built anything on it or anything of that nature while this has been ongoing. So I think it's important to ensure that we're on the record with saying that that's something that I believe needs to happen. But I also wanted to stress that this is a very historical space. This spot not only was home to the 54th Regiment, which I think everybody here is aware of the Black Regiment that fought in the Civil War, but also goes all the way back to when we had Native Americans in these, in these lands, and their tribes were, had places to live within the spaces that we now call Boston, and in this specific place, High Park, and then Sprague Pond area. That was a place that they were cited, that was a home for them. And so, from an archaeological standpoint, from a, from a local standpoint, from a conservation for environment standpoint, all of those things are aligned for doing what is happening here. The one thing I would just like on the record, I did not have that private conversation with the chief, but I do know that there are, that I've been told that those conversations are ongoing and are progressing in the way that they should be. But I would just like to state that it is my hope that the administration, as they hear that, as they see my support for it, make sure that they do right by those gentlemen who purchased that land. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counsel Arroyo. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? The Chair recognizes Counsel Lou Jean. Counsel Lou Jean, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say that as a High Park resident, as Counsel Arroyo has mentioned, heard a lot from constituents about the preservation of Sprague Pond, so just want to voice my support for full preservation and also full compensation. So we've heard my office said a lot about this, and just want to make sure that folks know that we are in deep support of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Lou Jean. Counsel Lara, the Chair of the Committee on Environmental Justice, Resiliency, and Parks, seeks-
Parks, seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 0653. We're going to do a roll call vote. Since this is an eminent domain docket, it does require a two-thirds vote of the City Council. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll call.
Roll call on docket number 0653, Councilor Arroyo. Councilor Arroyo, yes. Councilor Baker. Councilor Baker, aye. Councilor Bock. Councilor Bock, aye. Councilor Braden. Councilor Braden, aye. Council Coletta. Council Coletta, yes. Council Fernandez Anderson. Council Fernandez Anderson, yes. Council Flaherty. Council Flaherty, yes. Council Flynn. Council Flynn, yes. Council Lara. Council Lara, yes. Council Lou Jean. Council Lou Jean, yes. Council Mihia. Council Mihia, yes. Council Murphy. Council Murphy, yes. Docket 0653 has received a unanimous vote.
The docket has passed. Matters recently heard before possible action. Mr. Clerk, can you please read docket 0185?
Docket number 0185, petition for a special law regarding an act granting the City of Boston the authority to provide legal voting rights in municipal elections for the, for City of Boston residents aged 16 and 17 years old.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Royal, Chair of the Committee on Government Operations. Council Royal, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council President Flynn. The committee held a working session on June 13, 2022. This Home Rule petition would authorize the City of Boston to allow any individual aged 16 or 17, who is a resident of Boston, to be able to vote, as long as they are eligible under state law, for all other qualifications other than age, and to be clear, to vote in municipal elections. These individuals would be added to a list of voters established and maintained by the Board of Election Commissioners, and would be allowed to vote for local offices and ballot questions. This would be done by having them fill out an alternative registration form. The Board of Elections would be responsible for the associated costs. The petition would also grant the Board the authority to implement regulations associated with this act. When the individual turns 18, they would be removed from the separate list and informed that they must register to vote in accordance with state law. We were informed during this process that they can preregister, and so it's possible that we can make that one smooth process. I would, I would like to thank Council Mihia and Council Bock for sponsoring this matter, as well as my council colleagues who joined us, Council President Flynn, and Councilors Murphy, Flaherty, and Lou Jean. I'd also like to thank members of the administration, Anita Tavares, Commissioner of the Election Department, and Marta Crilly, Archivist for Reference and Outreach at Boston City Archives. During this working session, we were able to gain clarity around the pre-registration process for 16 and 17-years-old residents in the City of Boston in efforts of having a simplified process that would limit a burdensome effort on the Elections Department. The committee also discussed specific language changes that would ensure a more gender-neutral version of this Home Rule petition, as well as ensuring terms such as "local voter" were consistent with language already written by the Commonwealth. As we await more specific language changes from the original sponsors of this Home Rule petition, I recommend that this docket ought to remain in committee. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Council Royal. Docket 0185 will remain in committee. Motions, orders, and resolutions. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 0767, please.
Docket number 0767, Councilors Lara and Baker offer the following. Order for a hearing to utilize American Rescue Plan Act federal and state COVID recovery funds to buy back Hackney carriage medallions.
Thank, thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Lara. Council Lara, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn. I would like to move to replace docket number 0767 with the amended version, which I've added to everybody's desk. This amended version reflects just small changes and updated, updates on data, and I think the City Clerk also has.
Let me just confirm, everybody have the updated docket? You may continue, Council Lara.
Thank you, President Flynn. I would also like to suspend the rules and add Councilor Flaherty as one of the original co-sponsors.
Hearing no objection, Council Flaherty is so ordered.
Thank you. I am really excited to put this on the floor with both Councilor Baker and Councilor Flaherty. Just a few weeks ago, this body voted unanimously to support a resolution that would ultimately strike down, or ask in the State House to strike down Uber and Lyft's overreach in their ballot question, which has now been voted down and been identified as not moving forward by the Supreme Court Justice. And I think that in conversations about Big Tech's overreach and the impact of Uber and Lyft on our, on our city, and the possible future impact that they could have, my office has done a lot of reflection in terms of the impact that Big Tech has already had on the constituents here in the City of Boston. And so, in ultimately, the introduction of Uber and Lyft and these kind of rideshare companies, for lack of a better word, has decimated our local taxi industry. And I think that I'm, want to explore what it would look like to use ARPA funds to really give some relief to these families. Most of the folks, actually more than half of the people who own taxi medallions here in the City of Boston own one to four of them. So, we're talking about families who run their small businesses, who use this as their source of income, and have ultimately, because of Uber and Lyft or these rideshare companies, are underwater and in debt. And with COVID-19, you know, just kind of turning our economy upside down, it's really added more pressure, financial pressure for these families. The ARPA funds have really been identified for us to also be able to give one-time support to small business owners. And Councilor Baker oftentimes talks about, how are we going to make sure that we use ARPA funds to have a lasting impact? And I think that creating a grant program that would help these families get into, get out of the red and, and into the black, and really give them the financial support that they need, is going to have a huge impact economically on our city. We didn't do enough for the taxi industry when Uber and Lyft was coming into the City of Boston, and I think that with ARPA funds, we really have an opportunity to make some corrective legislation here in the city to support these families. Councilor Baker has been a leader and incredibly vocal about his support for the taxi companies. I found out that Councilor Flaherty's father was a taxi driver, and so I'm really excited to work on this issue with the both of them.
Thank, thank you, Council Lara. The Chair recognizes Council Baker. Council Baker, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I'd really like to thank Council Lara for including me in on this. This was an issue that I worked a lot on. We watched the whole industry slip away in front of us. Classic, classic, you know, get rid of a, get rid of a service that is provided, and then once that service is gone, you come in, you see, you saw with Uber and Lyft, the prices go up, all those, all those sorts of things. But even more than, further than just going after ARPA dollars, dollars, this is a, a good time to talk about the taxi industry, possibility to maybe rebuild that, that industry with more, more of a local focus. You know, in, in, whatever it is that taxi industry needs to do to, to, to come back, you know, we should be able to talk about it. I know there was money available. The state had, had, you know, we got, we got, I think it was a dollar per ride. Where did that money go? That's maybe a good place to start the discussion also. So, thank you, Council Lara, for including me. Thank you, Mr. President.
And thank you, Council Baker. The Chair recognizes Council Flaherty. Council Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank the lead sponsor for including me. As mentioned, my grandfather actually owned and drove a cab, as did my father and his older, like his older brother, as just helping out the family, raising tent kids. So, taxi medallions have helped folks raise families, educate their children, and also been able to borrow on them and upgrade their fleet. So, the taxi medallion industry, their values have been decimated, in obviously large part to the rideshares, but also because of the onerous requirements of the Hackney Division. So, while we're talking about this, we may want to bring the Hackney Division in just to see what, if anything, they can do to kind of make things easier for those that are still trying to compete in the taxi industry. And maybe we could sort of have a rebirth, if you will, of the taxi industry, which at one point flourished here in Boston, taking advantage of close proximity to Logan, as well as all of our tourist attractions, our hotels, our convention center. There is no reason why our taxi industry cannot flourish in this city. And unfortunately, it's off the rails right now, but I think that this hearing will be very timely and bring in the appropriate parties to try to, one, assist in that, whether it's the buyback medallion program, or finding ways that the Hackney Division could be less onerous and more cooperative and helpful with existing, current cab drivers and owners to try to help them and their businesses survive. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Flaherty. The Chair recognizes Council Coletta. Council Coletta, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chair. I just rise to commend the makers. We are in a humanitarian crisis with this. We are seeing it across the country. Folks have lost their life savings, and the suicide rate in New York City alone is just appalling. So, I, I love the fact that we're, we're looking into this, so thank you again. This docket reminds me of a proposal that we put forth in 2020 during the height of the pandemic to buy back liquor licenses from restaurants as a, as a means of relief. And back then, the administration was not open to it. Hopefully, they will be open to it this time around. And I just want to flag that in New York City, they went after predatory lenders, and they also wrote legislation that forgave debt and provided additional relief. So, would just respectfully, through the Chair, encourage the makers to review New York City's model, and I just look forward to the conversation ahead on this. So, thank you.
Thank, thank you, Council Coletta. I also wanted to ask a, a question to the Chair, to the, to the Chair, to the, to the author of this. The, the taxi industry now is under the, is being supervised under the Hackney Division of the Boston Police Department. I don't think that under Uber or Lyft, that's, that's the case, as Council Flaherty referenced. Would we be able to have a discussion on the differences between supervision under the Boston Police with the taxis, and what supervision, if any, Boston Police has under, under Uber and Lyft? But just wanted to ask Council Lara her thoughts on that.
Thank you, President Flynn. First, I wanted to add two things. One of them is that we're, we're researching New York City's model, and New York City's model inspired a lot of the writing and the thought behind looking at this hearing order, specifically because we've seen a lot of creative approaches. I think that we have to have a specific conversation about what works in the City of Boston, how our program works, and how we can be inspired by some of the work that other cities have done. I also want to say that we cannot solve this problem alone. My hope is that having this hearing order, creating a city program, is going to signal to the state that they also have to kind of pitch in and help us, and help the people in the state. So, I think that those are two, two responses that I wanted to give to, to what I heard from my colleagues. This question and the lack of liability from Uber and Lyft, and specifically these big tech companies, are part of what we've been fighting with this ballot initiative, is that Uber and Lyft wants to continue to consider their employees independent contractors so that they also don't have any liability for things that happen in the Uber and during the rides. And so, I think that this is part of this bigger statewide fight to make sure that we are considering these drivers as employees of these companies, so that we can ensure that these companies have liability. And so, similarly, the Boston Police Department has oversight of the Hackney program. There is no oversight with Uber and Lyft. And not only is there not any oversight, they are currently, because they consider their drivers independent contractors, there is no liability. So, there's no level of consumer protection. And as part of my fight against Big Tech here in the state and in the City of Boston, I definitely want to look more about how we make sure that Uber and Lyft are liable for the well-being, and we're really increasing consumer protections for these big tech companies. So, yes, I would love to have that conversation.
Thank you. Thank you, Council Lara. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Please raise your hand. Mr. Clerk, please, please put down Council Royal, Baker, Bock, Braden, Coletta, Council Fernandez Anderson, Council Lou Jean, Council Mihia, Council Murphy, and the Chair as well. Docket 0767 will be assigned to the Committee on Boston's COVID-19 Recovery. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 0768, please.
Docket number 0768, Councilors Mihia and Arroyo offer the following. Order for a hearing on expanding access for minority business enterprises into high-volume commercial centers.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Mihia. Council Mihia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to my co-sponsor for joining me on this refile. Actually, we hosted a hearing last year in regards to the fact that a lot of businesses across the City of Boston, primarily in places like the Seaport, Newbury Street, Fannie Hall, we don't have a lot of presence of Black and Brown-owned businesses. And we felt we had an opportunity to not just call that out, but to really, as a city, lean into that conversation, because you can't say that we're about economic empowerment and then shut out all of the different ways that people can actually be about that. So, most recently, this past weekend, I got wind of an incident that happened in the Seaport. Venues in Boston such as Society on High in the Financial District were recently issued a seized and deceased letter on the grounds of optics negatively impacting the clientele of color, service providers of color, and its employees. In fact, over 50 employees were impacted as a result of this. And so, one thing is to create opportunities for businesses of color to thrive throughout the city, but then the other piece of it is, what are we going to do to address the racial discrepancies that continue to matter of fact? So, we want to file this hearing order to give an opportunity to talk about what we can do as a city to not only create more opportunities to build economic prosperity for communities of color, but more importantly, what are we going to do to ensure that that we are holding ourselves to a standard of what it looks like when we create space and are super intentional about that space? And also recognizing that here in the City of Boston, and we, I, I know I always bring this into the chamber, you know, we have a history here. We have a history here. And that history lies in an opportunity, I believe, for us to really repair the harm and lean into this conversation. So, it is my hope that with this refile, we can not only just have a conversation, but actually put some thought into what are we going to do in regards to that through legislation. So, and I just want to like to thank my co-sponsor for also bringing this up and, and championing this alongside me. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Mihia. The Chair recognizes Council Royal. Council Royal, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you to Council Mihia for sponsoring this with me. I think it's important for everybody on the council that Boston reflects its values, and that those values include making sure that people of color, specifically Black people within the City of Boston, are able to open and manage businesses in all places within this city, and that clientele of color, specifically Black clientele, are able to go and enjoy these spaces without feeling unwelcome, or uninvited, or as if somehow they are a burden. And, you know, I think these kinds of conversations can be difficult to have, but it's important to understand that history of this country and in the ways in which Black talent and culture have been invited into these spaces, while Black clientele have not, and making sure that we are creating these spaces where if you are profiting off of the talent of individuals of color, you are also making it a welcoming environment for individuals of color, and that we are continuing to do the work to raise those things where we see it flare up, where there are problems, where Black talent is welcome, but Black clientele is welcome. We will not stand for that. We will not tolerate that, where there are issues where businesses are making it harder for people to succeed in an area on, on those kinds of grounds. I think it's incredibly important that we stand up with one voice and, and push back against this. So, making that more welcome is, is incredibly important, I think, to the continuing success of the city. And, you know, I want to applaud it where it happens. We do have restaurants like Save-A-Restaurant in lounge, which is the only Black-owned restaurant and lounge in the downtown area of Boston. And so, making sure that we go from just having one place to multiple places, I think, is incredibly important for all of us, and making sure where places aren't necessarily owned by people of color, but they are hiring talent of color, that when that talent attracts people from all over the city, as it should, that all of them are welcome in these spaces and feel welcome in these spaces. So, with that, I, I thank the, the original sponsor, Council Mihia. I look forward to a hearing on this to make sure that we are doing everything in our power to, to live our values. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Royal. The Chair recognizes Council Flaherty. Council Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Please add my name. And as you know, we've been working very closely, along with Congressman Lynch, Senator Collins, and Representative Beal, with some of the major stakeholders down on the South Boston waterfront. And one that comes to mind is the WS Company that's done phenomenal work in the space at our prodding, and arguably probably a model for other destinations here in our city, but also other business districts that in and out, throughout across the city that could benefit. So, at the appropriate time when this hearing takes place, that may be a good opportunity for them to come in and share with us the model that we have been working with them and they've put in place down on the South Boston waterfront. It's, seems to be sort of paying dividends, if you will. There's a lot of excitement about it. A number of different businesses have benefited from it, and I think there's a real opportunity to expand that model throughout. And I think there's a real opportunity to expand that model throughout all parts of our city. Thank you, Mr. President. And please add my name and thank the makers of the order.
Thank you, Counsel Flaherty. Would anyone else like to speak on it or add their name? I would also like to highlight that Counsel Worell has also been fully engaged and active on this issue. In fact, he called me over the weekend about the High Street location. I had a discussion with Counsel Worell, so I know this issue is very important to him as well. So just wanted to highlight the work of our colleague, Counsel Brian Worell. Mr. Clerk, please add Counsel Baker, Counsel Bock, Counsel Braden, Counsel Coletta, Counsel Fernandez-Anderson, Counsel Flaherty, Counsel Lara, Counsel Louzhen. Please add the chair. Please add Counsel Murphy. Docet 0768 will be assigned to the Committee on Small Business and Professional License. Mr. Clerk, please read Docet 0769.
Document number 0769, Counsel Baker offer the following: Resolution dedicating the intersection of Savin Hill Ave. and Sydney Street as a Hero Square on behalf of Donald Vincent Baker's service and ultimate sacrifice for the United States of America in the Vietnam War.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counsel Baker. Counsel Baker, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Can you please add Counsel Aaron Murphy to this?
Mr. Clerk, please add Counsel Murphy. So, Adam, the chair recognizes Counsel Baker.
Thank you, Mr. President. Normally, Hero Squares are designated for men and women who die in service. My Uncle Don came back, well, he, in 1968, was wounded and nearly didn't come back. And the miracle about him was, and I had kind of learned this from hanging with his friends, and, you know, you have conversations at the funeral about veterans, and the special thing about him was, they had projected that he probably would have only lived another two or three years based on his injuries. He was hit with shrapnel in the back, and arms were practically hanging off, and wasn't expected to really live. So this is a way for me and my family to honor him in a Hero Square. It'll be different, it'll be the blue sign, but my Uncle Don was pretty special. He was someone that at 13 left his family to go travel with the carnival, the World of Mirth. He was a heavy equipment operator, was in Vietnam, building bases and airfields and that sort of stuff. He was older when he went over, and it was kind of a shock to his family. That was, I was six months old at the time, but you can imagine what it's like for a family. In our family, we grew up, Spring Garden, grandparents around the corner, everyone right there. So you shared the pain, you shared the trauma of the whole experience. And so I appreciate just being able to do this, and just be able to talk about him, and what a good person he was, the way his effect on other people, and the impact that he and his brothers and his friends, his crew, had in my neighborhood, and by extension Dorchester and other places. So thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Baker. The chair recognizes Counsel Murphy. Counsel Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you. So I stand to support Counsel Baker's dedication of the intersection of Savin Hill Ave. and Sydney Street as Hero Square on behalf of your Uncle Donald Baker's service and sacrifice in the Vietnam War. So I definitely want to thank your family for that. The Hero Square Program started in 1898 with the mission to educate communities about the history of service in their own neighborhoods. We want everyone to learn about the sacrifices made by service members in our communities. And Commissioner Santiago in the Boston Veterans Services Office does a wonderful job with these Hero Squares that we've been spending the last few years rededicating. So this dedication in Savin Hill is a great way to engage Dorchester residents with community members like Donald Baker, to learn more about the story that Counsel Baker just started to share with us, whose courageous acts of service led to the ultimate sacrifice with a spinal cord injury. So I do believe that this will ensure that the name Donald Baker will always be recognized, not just in that neighborhood in Dorchester, but across the city of Boston, which he deserves. So I stand in support, and thank you, Counsel Baker, for letting me join you on this.
Thank you, Counsel Murphy. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? The chair recognizes Counsel Flaherty. Would anyone like to have their name added? Please raise your hand. Please add Counsel Flaherty, Counsel Royo, Counsel Bock, Counsel Braden, Counsel Coletta, Counsel Fernandez-Anderson, Counsel Lara, Counsel Louzhen, Counsel Mejia. Please add the chair. The chair recognizes Counsel Baker. I'm sorry.
I should have said it at the beginning, but I would like to suspend and pass if possible. And if you, I wanted to read, can I just read this also here? This is the letter that the Navy sent my Aunt Dot when he was hit. With concerns, I confirm on behalf of the United States Navy that your husband, Donald Vincent Baker, was US Navy, was critically wounded in action on May 14, 1968 at Dongha, Vietnam. He sustained shrapnel wounds of the back, arms, face, and legs, and transsections of spinal cord D6 during the enemy artillery attack. During the enemy attack, his prognosis is poor. Your husband is presently hospitalized, and they go on to say that he'll receive the best care. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Baker, and I know the incredible sacrifices and contributions your family have made to our city and to our country as well, Counsel Baker. I know it, Counsel Flaherty and Murphy know it, but I'm glad you were able to highlight the incredible sacrifice and service of your family, Counsel Baker, and we appreciate that. Counsel Baker is seeking suspension of the rules and adoption of Docet 0769. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
No vote.
Mr. Clerk, can you please take a roll call vote? Roll call vote on Docet 0769. Counsel Royo.
Yes.
Counsel Royo, yes. Counsel Baker.
Aye.
Counsel Baker, aye. Counsel Bock.
Aye.
Counsel Braden.
Aye.
Counsel Coletta.
Yes.
Counsel Coletta, yes. Counsel Fernandez-Anderson.
Yes.
Counsel Fernandez-Anderson, yes. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Lara.
Counsel Lara, yes.
Counsel Louzhen.
Yes.
Counsel Louzhen, yes. Counsel Mejia.
Yes.
Counsel Mejia, yes. And Counsel Murphy.
Yes.
Counsel Murphy, yes. Document number 0769 has received a unanimous vote. The resolution has been adopted. Mr. Clerk, please read Docet 0770.
Document number 0770, Counsel Fernandez-Anderson offer the following: Resolution to acknowledge, condemn, and apologize for the role played by the city of Boston in the transatlantic slave trade and the ongoing detrimental impacts experienced by the black people of Boston.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counsel Fernandez-Anderson. Counsel Fernandez-Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to add a couple of counselors as original co-sponsors as well. Counselor Ruthie Louzhen and Counselor Kendra Lada.
Counselor Fernandez-Anderson is seeking to add Counsel Louzhen and Counsel Lara. Seeing a hearing, no objection. Both counselors are added.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer this because I think that it's imperative that we apologize for the heinous historical criminality of slavery in its modern-day manifestations. When a harm is done, the first step is to acknowledge the harm and to apologize for it. The fact that this hasn't been done, and yet at the municipal level, is stunning to me. Let's just look at the facts for a moment. Slavery likely began in Boston in 1638 and was legalized in Massachusetts in 1641. Massachusetts Bay Colony slave codes were authored by the state's first governor, John Winthrop. These codes legalized and formalized a set of incredibly harsh and dehumanizing conditions. The local economy grew exponentially, largely on the backs of unpaid enslaved laborers. The enslaved African population of Boston increased 350% over the first half of the 18th century. Many famous and wealthy Bostonians of the era, including Peter Faneuil, grew rich from the buying and selling of enslaved Africans. When he died, he still owned five human beings. As estate inventory of all white Bostonians taken between 1700 and 1775, around 25% of them possessed enslaved Africans. The legacy of this disasterly crime manifests today in generational trauma and in various disparities in realm of politics, economics, and social indicators. We've heard it often, but it is such an astounding stat that it bears repeating. The average net worth of white family in Boston is $250,000, while the average net worth of black family is still $8. In terms of businesses that attained contracts with the city between 2014 and 2019, a dismal 0.4% of them were black-owned. In short, the political and economy power brokers of Boston have a lot to apologize for, and I say now is a good time to do so. I filed this, and a lot of, of course, vitriol from Twitter, our favorite platform, and calls and emails, and even people stopped me in events. There were a lot of people that said, you know, "We didn't do that, my ancestors did." But still, yet, I recognize that there are poor white families or individuals that feel that they are not responsible because they don't have the privilege of their white brothers and sisters that do have money or wealth. And so this is not necessarily to target one individual, and I believe that as a black woman, I shouldn't have to stand here and apologize and educate. It's not, the burden shouldn't be on me to educate, but it is incumbent on me, if I have this knowledge or information, that I am patient and graceful with my white brothers and sisters, to extend more grace and say, there should be a platform for reconciliation. There should be a platform where we treat each other as though we are equal. To do so, before we begin the process of reconciliation, we must speak the truth. In order for us to talk about the truth, we have to begin with intentions. If you don't have the courage to actually act on your intention, then at least that you feel it in your heart, that this is wrong, that there has been no time in history in municipal government where the city of Boston has actually taken responsibility and apologized for the harm, and the perpetual harm that still continues today. We can go on and on and speak about Willie Lynch, redlining, busing, mass incarceration, now systemic racism. And even today, all of the departments in the city of Boston, excluding maybe one, I found in the budget process, to be highly still systemically racist. We do not hire, according to the demographics, or at least the people that are hired in city departments, do not reflect the population of the city of Boston. I know that this council, at least, wants to do right. I also know that this council works very hard to create, to the best of their purview or ability or courage, to create racial justice in the city of Boston. But politics is a funny thing. Where we get sponsored by unions, or nurses and officers, and people of high upper-middle class, people that donate to our campaigns, people that speak about the good and the greater good of working class, yet we have to somehow respond to everyone, and our responsibility is to consolidate our community, those that are invested in politics, and those who are not, and those who don't have access. This is a hard task, but I believe that in the midst of all of that conflict, in the midst of all of that balancing act between those who have and those who don't, the status quo, and those who don't have access, the poor and the rich, that we are all interconnected, white, black, that we can do better, that we can be more intentional, and to do so, we must speak truth. And without truth, there is no reconciliation. If we are intentional, if we are sincere, I implore you to at least pray or ask the universe to give you some sort of motivation to act upon it, and those who don't know better yet will follow. Today, I'm asking you to give your hearts and your courage to vote to suspend and pass this resolution today, so that we can actually act upon our intention, and hopefully acknowledge the harm, and begin discussions about what it means to truly undo the harm that has been done to the African-American people in the city of Boston. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Fernandez-Anderson. The chair recognizes Counsel Louzhen. Counsel Louzhen, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Counsel Fernandez-Anderson, for bringing this forward. We, as a city, we have a lot of work to do to reckon with our past. We are talking about the work that we need to do to build a better, more just, more equitable Boston. For me, when we think about the word equity, that we talk about a lot, baked into the very idea of equity is about the corrective action that we need to take for our policy harms and the policy wrongs that we've done in the past. When we look at the brilliance, you know, that really culminated in decades, centuries-long work on making the case for reparations, when Ta-Nehisi Coates talks about the foundation of the wealth building in this country, and the foundation of capitalism really being the slave trade, and that really serving as a model of wealth-building and profit. When we think about our city and the wealth of our city, which I talk about quite often, that wealth is really built on the back of blacks in the city and around the country. So we have a lot of work to do when it comes to acknowledging the harm and really repairing. But it's one of the frustrations that I experience when we talk about equity, because it is now the word du jour, and baked into that word is corrective action. Baked into the word equity is an acknowledgement of our history and where we have gone wrong, and what we need to do to make it all right. A second thing that I wanted to mention is that Boston has this really rich, and I think Counsel Fernandez-Anderson spoke to this as well, the idea that Boston has this very rich history of abolitionism, and we talk about it, but when we do that, we ignore the fact that we also played a very active role in the slave trade. I think about the Fugitive Slave Act, and something that I have up in my office that I got from the Museum of African History, about a decade ago, is this advertisement that was put out by, I think his name was Theodore Parker, a prominent abolitionist at the time, to warn black folks in the city of Boston about potential capture. Now, just read it so that everyone sees it. It says, "Caution, colored people of Boston, one and all, you are hereby respectfully cautioned and advised to avoid conversing with watchmen and police officers of Boston, for since the recent order of the mayor and alderman, they are empowered to act as kidnappers and slave catchers, and they have already been actually employed in kidnapping, catching, and keeping slaves. Therefore, if you value your liberty and the welfare of the fugitives among you, shun them in every way possible, in every possible manner, as so many hounds on the track of the most unfortunate of your race. Keep a sharp lookout for kidnappers and have top eye open." This was April 24, 1851, when slavery was outlawed in 1783. And when we talk about evolution of discrimination and racism and bias, it's a continuum, right? These racist structures don't just disappear, they're really ingrained in a lot of the work that we have to undo here in City Hall, in the city. So, and my last point will be also to something Counsel Fernandez-Anderson said, right? This is not about individual blame. When I went to college, I remember I met someone who's a really good friend of mine, who introduced me to this singer-songwriter named Ben Folds, who has a song called "Rock in the Suburbs." And in that song, he talks about coming up to a stoplight, and he's a white guy, and how a black man in a car next to him pulls up and looks at him and darts his eyes at him. And Ben Folds in this song was like, "He's glaring at me because, you know, my great-great-great-granddad made someone, maybe his great-great-granddad, his slave." And he says, "But it wasn't my idea, not at all my idea, never my idea." And this isn't about today whether or not slavery was an individual person's idea, right? It's not about whether it was your idea, it's about acknowledging that profit, that wealth in this country, in this city, in Boston, we're able to tout this AAA bond rating, these very strong fiscal resources that we have in this city, but a lot of that is rooted in unjust systems that really start, we start with indigenous folks coming here in the Mass Bay Colony, but it continued with slavery. And so we have a lot of work to do to atone for that, to repair the harm. And so, we have a lot of work to do to atone for that, to repair the harm, and to do the work together, to really be honest about our history, to do the work of repairing. And I think the idea of having a citywide conversations about truth and reconciliation are really important part of that process. So, just want to thank Councilor Fernandez-Anderson and all the activists and advocates, a lot of them who are here, who have really been doing the work to really center this conversation in the city of Boston. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Loujain. The chair recognizes Councilor Lara. Councilor Lara, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn, and I would like to extend my gratitude to Councilor Fernandez-Anderson for including me as one of the original co-sponsors in this resolution. I don't have much more to say. We've heard from Councilor Fernandez-Anderson about the importance of this. We've gotten an incredible amount of historical context from Councilor Loujain, and so I think for my remarks, I would just like to quote El Haje, Malik El Shabazz, or Malcolm X, as folks know him. Brother Malcolm said that "If you stick a knife in my back nine inches and pull it out six inches, that is not progress. If you pull the knife out completely, that is still not progress." That progress is ultimately healing the wound that was made by pulling, putting the knife in my back in the first place. And to paraphrase, not only have we not taken the knife out, we haven't even admitted that the knife is there. And so, some people will say that we have taken the knife out six inches. Some people might even argue that we've taken the knife out completely, and that we are doing work to start healing that wound. And I'm not here today to argue the merit of either of those arguments, but this resolution is specifically about not skipping the critical step of admitting that the knife is there. And so, my hope is that my council colleagues will vote in favor of passing this resolution today, because we can't get to pulling it out six inches, we can't get to pulling it out completely, and we definitely cannot heal the wound if we don't first admit that the knife was there in the first place. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilora. The chair recognizes Councilor Mejia. Councilor Mejia, you have the floor.
Counselor, I don't know what's first, but, Mr. President, I'll go first. Thank you. So, I just want to thank the maker. I am so incredibly just grateful for your leadership, and to the co-sponsors for rising up. I do think that this moment here in the city of Boston, I do know how difficult it is to stand up and call things out, because Twitter is terrible at letting you know about yourself. And I think that this city has an amazing opportunity to really right the wrong, and we can't do that if we're not allowing ourselves to recognize the harm that has been done. And I think, as a council, right, this moment calls for us to have that courage, and to recognize that if we're really serious about restorative justice, if we're really serious about the things that we talk about in terms of equity, we can't miss out on this opportunity in passing this resolution, and saying that this is how we begin that process. So, Counselor Fernandez-Anderson, I just want to say thank you, because I remember when I first filed just a hearing order on reparations, how much backlash I got from folks as a result of that. And then when we entered the conversation about ordinance here in the city of Boston, how that backlash continued. But despite that backlash, we have to keep showing up and pushing the envelope. So that is what courage is all about. So I am grateful for you and to the advocates for continuing to sound the alarm of what this moment calls for. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Mejia. The chair recognizes Councilor Royal. Councilor Royal, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to extend my gratitude to the maker. I think my council colleagues of color understand, and those not of color who have stood up on racial justice issues. I don't think I've ever received vitriol the way I do on anything that I stand up on to speak in support of or in favor of, like I do when that thing is Black Lives or race in this city, in this country. That is usually when the worst vitriol comes my way. And so, you know, I appreciate the courage. I think this is an important part for the city to acknowledge their role in this, the ways in which we have profited as a city over time by this trade, and by the ways in which we have excluded and/or subjugated entire people. And so, you know, I think the biggest part for me about this and an act like this, and the importance of an act like this, is admitting that the harm was done, and taking accountability for that part of it, so that we can move on to the healing and the restoration that comes after. But nothing comes until you do that part. And so, I'm grateful to you for putting this on table, I'm grateful for the folks and the advocates in the room who have pushed for this. This is not a new matter, and I hope that the passage of this, which I am going to vote in favor of this, and I look forward to voting in favor of this, that the passage of this begins us on a track towards having real conversations about how we do that healing, how we address some of those harms that have been done, and the ways in which our neighborhoods have sort of borne the brunt of them over decades. And so, I look forward to this. Thank you. Thank you to those on the council who have pushed for this, thank you to the advocates in the room who have pushed for this, and I'm grateful to you.
Thank you, Council Royal. The chair recognizes Council Bock. Council Bock, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Mr. President, and I just wanted to thank the makers and to add my voice along with my vote in support of this. Please add my name. I think I said this when Councilor Mejia and I introduced the reparations hearing order last session, but the reality is, is that we live inside of institutions in the city of Boston, many, and celebrate them and talk, you know, about them, many of which have a legacy that goes back to before the slave trade, and certainly the profiting off of the slave, off of slavery was banned in this city. So I just, I want to say that it hasn't been that long, and that so many of the things that shaped the architecture of this city date to the same period, and so I think it's very important. We can't go and talk about our institutions that we're so proud have been around, they're the oldest in the country because they've been around since the 1600s or the 1700s, without saying the Boston of the 1600s and 1700s, where Africans were enslaved in this city also still lives with us. And so, I just want to thank the makers and say that I'll be voting in support.
Thank you, Council Bock. The chair recognizes Council Baker. Council Baker, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for your words, they were great. There's three pieces here: acknowledge, condemn, and apologize. Acknowledge and condemn, I'm all in. Apologize, I'm a little uneasy about, if we can be honest, if we're going to have conversations. You know, I feel so far removed from John Winthrop and Peter Faneuil and Harvard University. I grew up a little rough and tumble, we grew up poor. So the apologize part is difficult for me, but I think if my words can help your community heal, and our community in Boston heal, then I'm absolutely ready to do this and sign on to this and vote for this, for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Baker. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? I'm going to allow Council Fernandez to speak on this a second time.
Thank you, Mr. President. I first thank you for all the kind words and encouragement, and yes, thank you, Council Mejia, for filing for the hearing order for the commission on reparations, and as well as Council Bock for your efforts in the previous year. I would first like to acknowledge Council Baker. Council Baker, it is that, this level of work and sincerity that will take us to reconciliation, will take us to healing. If you had said anything else, if you had been pretentious about it, I would have said, "He's not ready." But the fact that you got up and you said, "This is how I feel, I will be honest with you," but in support, in the effort, or in the spirit of healing, if this helps, then so be it, I'm with you. I appreciate that, and I think that is where we start. I thank you for your open heart. I look forward to doing my part, hopefully to bringing you to understand. And as far as the advocates, I'd like to just recognize quickly, not quickly, but I have to do it quickly, Reverend Kevin Peterson, I thank you so much for your blood, sweat, and tears in this work. Of course, all of the, every single advocate here. Sister Aziza Robinson, good night. I see a lot of Johan and all of the beautiful people in the room, Paulo Barros, and I can't name all of you because of time, but there are people in the community, in the city of Boston, that have been fighting for this, people before us and people today, and those who will come after us, and I want to thank you. I want to thank all of my black brothers and sisters and allies that are here, that has taken the time to understand that this is important, and I apologize that city council meetings are at 12 o'clock for those at home, and I thank all of those who are watching in that spirit, and I look forward to working with you. I appreciate you, I serve you, and I love you.
Thank you, Councilor Fernandez-Anderson. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the makers for their important message in how we move forward as a city, so I want to acknowledge the importance of this resolution. Over the weekend, I had several calls as well, from my colleagues, but also from Reverend Kevin Peterson, also from my friend in the podium, in the stands there, Bill Wright, as well, and just want to acknowledge their commitment to bringing this city together. But I also want to acknowledge the important words of Council Baker as well. You know, it's important that we have a strong and positive message of inclusion and of addressing our past history, even though it's hurtful and painful, but that's exactly what Council Baker did today, and that's what, that's what this body is all about, is dealing with tough, difficult issues, even if it hurts you in your own community. But I just want to acknowledge the incredible, the incredible resolution that's before us. And I was talking to another advocate over the weekend about this, about this hearing order, and there's a congressman that's, I believe it's Seth Moulton in the North Shore, he's asking for veterans that served in World War II, most of them unfortunately are dead now, but they didn't get their VA benefits, African-American veterans, but there's a proposal before Congress that would recognize the family, families, of African-American veterans that were excluded from VA benefits, so that their family could get those. That might be housing support, that might be a job training support, that might be, that might be financial assistance. But here you have African-American veterans that served in World War II, many of them were wounded, many of them were killed unfortunately, but many of them, many of them were wounded, and they came back to cities like Boston and Chicago and Cleveland and New York City, and they weren't able to get a VA home loan, which most World War II veterans, that's how they bought their, that's how they bought their homes, was through the VA home program, but not African-American veterans. So I was, I had a long discussion with an activist over the weekend, as I mentioned, but the, here's a community, here's men and women, they're ready to, and willing to die for our country, which they did, and wounded for our country, which they did, but they came back here and they, they weren't treated with the respect and dignity that they've earned. So it's a somewhat, it's a somewhat similar story, but I'm certainly supportive of this, of this declaration, because it's an important, it's an important matter, but it also puts Boston on a path where we can address our terrible mistakes of the past, but to try to come together as a city and improve, improve, raise relations for all. So I just want to acknowledge the, this proposal by our colleagues, Council Loujain, Council Lara, and Council Royal.
Fernandez-Anderson.
Yeah, yeah, Council Fernandez-Anderson. So, would anyone else like to add their name? Please raise your hand. Please add Council Baker, Council Bock, Council Braden, Council Coletta, Council Flaherty, Council Mejia, Council Murphy. Please add the chair. Oh, please add Council Royal. Council Fernandez-Anderson, Council Lara, and Council Loujain. Seek suspension of the rules and adoption of Docket 0770. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay.
Got the vote.
Mr. Clerk, we're going to have a roll call vote. Could you please call the roll? Roll call vote on Docket 0770. Council Royal.
Yes.
Council Royal, yes. Council Baker.
Yes.
Council Baker, yes. Council Bock.
Yes.
Council Bock, yes. Council Braden.
Yes.
Council Braden, yes. Council Coletta.
Yes.
Council Coletta, yes. Council Fernandez-Anderson.
Yes.
Council Fernandez-Anderson, yes. Council Flaherty.
Yes.
Council Flaherty, yes. Council Flynn.
Yes.
Council Flynn, yes. Council Lara.
Yes.
Council Lara, yes. Council Loujain.
Yes.
Council Loujain, yes. Council Mejia.
Yes.
Council Mejia, yes.
Yes.
Council Murphy.
Yes.
Council Murphy, yes. Docket number 0770 has received a unanimous vote.
Yes!
Thank you. We're going to take a brief recess for two minutes. We're going to take a brief recess for two minutes. Mr. Clerk.
Yes.
Mr. Clerk, please read docket 0771.
Docket number 0771, Councilors Braden and Bock offer the following. Resolution commemorating the 50th anniversary of the Hotel Vendome Fire on June 17, 1972, and memorializing the lives of nine firefighters lost in the line of duty.
The chair recognizes Council Braden. Council Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to suspend the Rule 12 and add yourself President Flynn as a third cosponsor.
Hearing no objections, the chair has added as the original third cosponsor.
You know, I came to Boston and got involved with the McCarthy family, my partner's family. And there's a tradition in that family that when a fire truck goes by with all the alarms going, they say, "St. Lawrence prayed for them." And it's a reminder that firefighters rush into danger to save lives every day. On June 17, 1972, after nearly three hours of fighting a massive blaze at the Hotel Vendome on 160 Commonwealth Ave in the Back Bay, part of the building collapsed, trapping 25 firefighters and claiming the lives of nine members, making the tragedy the largest line of duty death in the history of the Boston Fire Department. This Friday, we will be commemorating the 50th anniversary of that very tragic day and the loss of those firefighters. The nine members of the Fire Department whose lives were lost were Fire Lieutenant Thomas J. Carroll of Engine 32, Fire Lieutenant John E. Hanbury of Ladder 13, Firefighter Charles Donlan of Ladder 13, Firefighter Joe Sanok of Ladder 13, Firefighter John E. Jamison of Engine 22, Firefighter Thomas W. Beckwith of Engine 32, Firefighter Paul J. Murphy of Engine 32, Firefighter Richard McGee of Engine 32 and Firefighter Joseph E. Boucher of Engine 22. The tragedy of the Hotel Vendome Fire exemplifies the risk, courage and selfless sacrifice of the firefighters in the performance of the duty and service. And recently, last fall, we had a fire in our neighborhood. It was in the early morning hours, 1:00 or so. And we had a lot of fire alarms going off. And we got out of bed and we walked over and witnessed firsthand the incredible bravery and commitment of our firefighters as they rescued folks from a fire. Unfortunately, one young man died in the blaze. But this is sort of the daily work of our firefighters. It's also a reminder that firefighters, they rush into danger every day. We had the Vendome tragedy on June 17, 1972. In December of 3, 1999, I was fairly new to the country, but there was a tremendous tragedy, a hard, really difficult tragedy in Worcester when six firefighters died when the building collapsed. And on September 11, 343 firefighters died, rushing into a building to save others. And I want to take this moment not only to recognize the sacrifices of the firefighters who fell on June 17, 1972, but all the other firefighters who died in the line of duty. And those also who are impacted by the pollution and the stress and the pollution that they experience just exposed to day to day in the everyday work. So I ask my colleagues to join me in supporting this resolution and honoring the fallen firefighters at the Vendome. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Braden. The chair recognizes Council Bock. Council Bock, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to you and to Council Braden for cosponsoring. Council Braden has spoken about it at length. So I just want to say that these firefighters are still very heavily remembered in the Back Bay. I'm glad that our predecessors were able to support a memorial to them 25 years ago. But you know, that day that we lost these nine men, we also, you know, 25 kids lost their father. And those kids are still alive today and they've been bearing that loss for 50 years. So I think it's meet and proper that the city should continue to recognize this. And I do want to, as the councillor for District 8, invite all colleagues who can make it on Friday at 11:00 a.m. will be at the memorial at that corner of Commonwealth and Dartmouth marking this anniversary. So anybody who can come, I know we would love to have you there. And just the one other thing I want to say is that, you know, in the aftermath of the Vendome Fire, there was a whole study. And what they found was that a structurally inappropriate modification had been made to the building, actually several decades prior. That was the reason for this sudden collapse of the five floors. So I just want to emphasize that for a lot of us as councillors, we encounter the fire codes when we have constituents calling, complaining about the fact that their building project is being hung up on the fact that the Fire Department still needs to do its due diligence. And I just think that the Vendome Fire is a really important example of why we have those important structural safety rules in place. So I just want to add my condolences to the families who still feel this loss 50 years later and support for all of our firefighters who do this dangerous work. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Chair now recognizes Council President Flynn. Council President Flynn, the floor is yours. Thank you, Council Royal, and thank you to Council Bock and Council Braden for adding me on as an original cosponsor. I just wanted to highlight the sacrifices of these firefighters, but also their families as well, the service and the sacrifices, their families made for our city and for our country. Over the weekend, we were at Forest Hills Cemetery in Jamaica Plain with many members of the Boston Fire Department. And some of them are here now from Local 718. It was firefighter Memorial Sunday. And we came together as a city to pray for the families of the fallen firefighters. But we also resolved as elected officials coming into the State House or coming into City Hall to do everything we can to support firefighters, to support their families on so many issues and challenges a firefighter faces every day. So, and I think Council Braden mentioned a couple of them, the various health-related issues that firefighters and their families are subjected to because of the dangerous job that they do. So I'm just honored to be here and to be part of this resolution. Thank you, Council Braden. Thank you, Council Bock. But also to all of my councillors who have been strong supporters of the Boston Fire Department, including former State Representative Michael Flaherty, Council Flaherty's father, who really led the charge up at the State House in support of firefighters across the state. Thank you, Council Royal. Thank you, Council President Flynn. Recognize Counselor Murphy. Counsel Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council Royal. So I'm standing in full support of commemorating the Hotel Vendome Fire and want to thank you, Council Braden, Council Bock, and also Council Flynn for filing this resolution. As we know, it takes a lot of courage and dedication to enter a burning building when others, we know, are trying to run out in the opposite direction. And it also requires training, skill, caring and discipline to rescue and tend to a victim of a fire or an accident in the midst of confusion and danger. Last month, I visited Moon Island with the recruit class and saw them in the midst of their training and knowing they have to put a lot of effort in to make sure that when they're on the job out there protecting us, that they're ready for that. So I stand with our councillors today to express our deepest condolences to those families whose loved ones were lost in service and to highlight the risk, courage and sacrifice of all of our firefighters in the city of Boston who protect and serve our residents every day. And Council Flynn mentioned, and I know I was there along with Council Flaherty and Council Lou Jean for the Young and Mayor Wu at the firefighter mass last weekend, which was beautiful. But when they handed out all those flowers and you saw how many firefighters we have lost and families that, you know, also put their life on the risk, their sacrifice also. So I just want to thank our firefighters and thank you to the sponsors of this.
Thank you, Council Murphy. And I recognize Counsel Mahia. Counsel Mahia, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Vice Chair. I just wanted to thank the makers for bringing this resolution to the floor. And I just have to say, you know, my first term was focused on COVID and I didn't really get an opportunity to build relationship or to learn about our frontline workers and the dedication and the risk that they put their lives in every single day. And I just want to just say thank you for not just answering the call of duty. I've gotten to know a lot of your members over the last year or so. And just the social, emotional and traumatic impact that a lot of the families face when they see their loved ones going off to duty and not knowing whether or not they're going to come back. And so I just want to rise in support of this resolution and to send my sincere condolences to the family and know that you have a fighter in me, even though I'm always fighting a child. But you know, lots of love. And thank you so much to my council colleagues for filing this resolution.
Thank you, Counsel Mahia. And I recognize Counsel Lou Jean.
Yes, thank you. And thank you to Council Braden for this resolution. Just want to echo what Counsel Murphy had said. We attended a beautiful, somber ceremony this past Sunday, really recognizing, acknowledging the sacrifice made by the firefighters who have lost their life when trying to save others. So I think the firefighters of the city, I think the families, I think Counsel Bock expressed it really well, like 25 children without parents as a result of the Hotel Vendome Fire. So I want to take a moment to acknowledge that as part of our history here in the city of Boston. And want to thank those who choose to enter this profession, which requires a great amount of sacrifice. So thank you to the makers in commemorating this moment of the Hotel Vendome Fire and to the city for other memorials to firefighters that we had on Sunday. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Lou Jean. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Seeing no other hands, would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Counsel Baker. Please add Counsel Coletta. Please add Counsel Fernandez Anderson. Please add Counsel Flaherty. Please add Counsel Laura. Please add Counsel Lou Jean. Please add Counsel Mahia. Please add Counsel Murphy. And please add my name. Councilors Braden, Bock and Flynn seek suspension of the rules and adoption of docket 0771. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say nay. Docket number 771 is now adopted. Thank you, Council Royal. Docket number 0772 is withdrawn. We're on to personnel orders. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 0773, please.
Document number 0773, Counsel Flynn for Counsel Royal.
The chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0773. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the docket is passed. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 0774.
Document number 0774, Counsel Flynn for Counsel Royal.
The chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0774. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the docket is passed. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 0775.
Document number 0775, Counsel Flynn for Counsel Bock.
The chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0775. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the docket is passed. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 0776.
Document number 0776, Counsel Flynn for Counsel Bock.
The chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0776. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the docket is passed. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 0777.
Document number 0777, Counsel Flynn for Counsel Braden.
The chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0777. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the docket is passed. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 0778.
Document number 0778, Counsel Flynn for Counsel Braden.
The chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0778. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the docket is passed. We're on to late files. I am informed by the clerk that there are four late file matters. The late file matters include a letter of absence from Counsel Worrell and three personnel orders. The late file matter should be on everyone's desk. Let me just take a minute just to confirm that. We will take a vote to add these items into the agenda. All those in favor of adding the late file matter into the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The late file matter has been added to the agenda. Mr. Clerk, please read the first late file matter, which is the letter of absence from Counsel Worrell.
Letter from City Council Brian Worrell. Dear council colleagues, I regretfully cannot attend today's city council meeting. A member of my staff will be present for the meeting and I look forward to reviewing their recording. Sincerely, Counselor Worrell, District 4 City Councillor.
Thank you. The late file matter will be placed on file. Mr. Clerk, please read the second late file matter, which is a personnel order from Counsel Murphy.
Personnel order, Counsel Flynn for Counsel Murphy.
The chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of the second late file matter. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, this late file matter has been passed. Mr. Clerk, please read the next late file matter, which is a personnel order from Counsel Murphy.
Personnel order for Counsel Flynn for Counsel Murphy.
The chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of this late file matter. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, this late file matter has been passed. Mr. Clerk, please read the last late file matter, which is another personnel order from Counsel Murphy.
Personnel order for Counsel Flynn for Counsel Murphy.
The chair seeks suspension of this, the passage of this late file matter. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, this late file matter has been added. We're on to green sheets. Anyone wishing to remove a matter from the green sheets may do so at this time. The chair recognizes Counsel Baker. Counsel Baker, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to remove docket 0376 from page 13 of 17 of the green sheets.
Mr. Clerk, can you please read docket 0376 into the record? It should be on as page 13, as Counsel Baker mentioned.
Document number 0376 from the Committee on Planning, Development and Transportation. Message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend $492,286 in the form of a grant, Accelerating Clean Transportation for All, awarded by the Massachusetts Clean Energy Center to be administered by the Transportation Department. The grant will fund the launch of an e-cargo bike delivery pilot, which will include supporting local businesses to join the program.
Mr. Clerk, can you please poll the committee members to see if they would allow the docket to come before the body?
Members of the Committee on Planning, Development and Transportation, Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Counsel Braden.
Yes.
Counsel Laura.
Yes.
And Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Docket 0376 is now properly before the body. Counsel Baker, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. This was a matter I was unable to... Well, first, I want to thank Counsel Flaherty for running the hearing for me. I was unable to attend that day. But it's money that goes into an e-bike delivery system over in Brighton. I apologize to my good colleague from Brighton for the time delay on this, but here we are. I told you we'd get here and here we are. So I just would like to see this go to the floor and be voted on and we can move the funds along. I think they run out at the end of June if we don't get them now.
Thank you, Counsel Baker. Would anyone like to speak on this matter? The chair recognizes Counsel Braden. Counsel Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Very briefly, I'd like to thank my colleague for pulling this from the green sheets. Very briefly, I'd like to thank my colleague for pulling this from the green sheets. This, this money will be sent as a pilot to introduce e-bike delivery in the neighborhood of Alston. You know, it will help, it's, it's a trial program to see if this delivery system will help reduce the double parking problems and all the, all those attendant issues with local delivery in the neighborhood. So, I look forward to passage of this and, and I'm excited to see whether this is a good, a good model going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now take a vote, well, I'm sorry. Counselor Bach, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. I just wanted to say briefly that I'm so excited about this, even though it's not in my district, because I strongly feel like e-cargo bike delivery is going to be crucial to the city's future. I have many narrow streets in my district and we constantly have oversized trucks knocking things down, knocking trees over, being, trying to take turns that they shouldn't be taking and endangering pedestrians. I just think that especially as we're getting more and more into this right-to-the-minute delivery world, the opportunity to have both a greener and frankly, a more safe, vision zero future in the city really relies on thinking again about things like bike delivery, which of course has also a past history and kind of cart-scale delivery, you know, was the norm 100 years ago. So, I, I just think that this is really exciting and I'm looking forward to seeing the results of the pilot.
Thank you, Counselor Bach. The chair recognizes Counselor Lara. Counselor Lara, you have the floor. I'm sorry. Yeah, there you go, Counselor Lara.
Thank you. Thank you, President Flynn. As a member of this committee and as the chair of the Environmental Justice Resiliency and Parks Committee, I'm incredibly excited to see this move forward. Thank you to Counselor Flaherty for hosting the hearing and Counselor Baker for stewarding this and pulling this from the green sheets. I think if we want to be a climate resilient city, it's going to be crucial that we reduce our greenhouse gas emissions, but also like Counselor Bach said, we are really moving towards a place specifically with COVID-19 where a lot of our most vulnerable communities are using delivery to really protect themselves and their families. And so, we're going to see and continue to see a really massive rise in this. And I think that this program is really thinking ahead and preemptively at ensuring that we're not adding more traffic and more vehicles and more emissions into our city. So, this is an incredibly creative program and I'm really excited that it's happening. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Lara. The chair recognizes Counselor Coletta. Counselor Coletta, you have the floor.
Thank you, Counselor President Flynn. I don't want to belabor the point. This is the first that I'm seeing this, given my recent arrival, so I'm just really excited about this. Counselor Bach, I think I have the narrowest streets in the city of Boston in the North End, so just thinking about this in, in the North End and the street woes that we are seeing in the North End, it's going to be a much appreciated pilot program. And then, of course, through the lens of, of green transportation, it's, it's, it's a welcomed investment. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Coletta. We will now take a vote on docket 0376. Counselor Baker moves for passage of docket 0376. All those, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0376 is passed. Consent agenda. I have been informed by the clerk that there are no additions to the consent agenda. I apologize. I have been informed by the clerk that we actually have two late file matters for the consent agenda. Can we take the first, first matter, Mr.? We'll take a vote, okay. Mr. Clerk, we're going to take a vote on both matters for the consent agenda. The chair moves for adoption of the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The consent agenda has been adopted. We are on to announcements. Does anyone have any announcements at this time? The chair recognizes Counselor Murphy. Counselor Murphy, you have the floor.
So, thank you, President Flynn. So, I'm standing to congratulate my son, Michael. This weekend, he'll be graduating from Massachusetts Maritime Academy and I'm proud of his accomplishments. He's my youngest. And I do want to call out all the seniors because this pandemic hit them, their sophomore year of college or if they were in high school. So, it was really hard to make sure as a parent, as teachers, as their peers, to keep it going and stay on track. So, I'm proud of him and all the seniors this year. And as the baby of the family, I have to selfishly say, I'm looking forward to him entering the workforce full-time. He's going to be buying me my Starbucks coffees now, so just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Murphy. The chair recognizes Counselor Mejia. Counselor Mejia, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you, President Flynn. I just wanted to just thank Juan Lopez from central staff for his hard work in helping us create a trauma-informed space for tomorrow's sexual assault and harassment hearing. What we're hoping to do is create a space for students and those who are going to be speaking to really be here in the most, as, as the most comfortable and safe space that we can create. So, I just want to just give Juan a shout out because we're going to have tissues and food and the circle and opening and he was just been so incredibly helpful to our office and making sure that tomorrow's public hearing, which is, will be here at 3:00, is, is, is intended for creating that restorative justice, kind of healing space for people to speak their truth and to do so in the most trauma-informed lens. And we also have clinicians that are going to be on deck to support families. So, I'm just really grateful to central staff for, for their support in helping us create the space and I encourage my colleagues to participate if your schedule permits. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Mejia. The chair recognizes Counselor Fernandez Anderson. Counselor Fernandez Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a quick shout out to Kai and Chris Grant from Black Market. If you guys missed it, if y'all, in case y'all didn't see my picture, me and Counselor Louis Jean, we were onstage. Counselor Mejia was onstage previous to that and with KRS-One, he was in the crowd and he performed for me. He only came to perform for me. I don't know about everybody else. That was the, I didn't see anybody else. But it was a blast. Shout out to Kai and Chris Grant for all of your hard work in place-making, place-keeping, bringing arts and creating platforms for artists in Boston to celebrate and to also preserve our history and identity here in Roxbury. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counselor Fernandez Anderson. The chair recognizes Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Flaherty, you have the floor. For purposes of a presentation, Mr. President? Yes. Are we prepared to do that now? Yes, Counselor Flaherty. So, should we call Kerry in? Yep.
Bittersweet moment for me as having been the council president when this body, under my leadership, hired Kerry and I've watched him grow into an amazing man, husband, and father. He has been a rock for us on the Boston City Council, just his day-to-day disposition and demeanor that is more than welcoming in the office right behind these walls, led us through a pandemic, always with a smile, never gets flustered, never gets angry. He is kind, he is composed, he's extremely talented, he is exactly what we saw in him when he joined the Boston City Council. Clearly for professional growth and development, he is leaving us, but he's put us in a great position and his successor, whoever he or she will be, will be filling in those shoes, which are huge and tremendous shoes. On a personal note, I'll let the secret out, he used to stash my M&Ms in his desk. So, when you see me sneak out every once in a while, I come back chomping on something. So, I actually may lose some weight with Kerry moving on to the administration. But to a person, we, we love you. I love you. My family loves you. You've been amazing and it's so sad to see you leave, but I know you're going on to bigger and better things and you're always welcome here. If it doesn't work out over there, you make sure you call me. I'll get, I'll get onto Flynn right away. But I know that you're going to be successful, whatever you do, and I know that you're always going to remember your time here and the relationships you've built here. One of the things as a council family, we have councilors come and go, the fact that I'm outlasting you on the Boston City Council is probably aging me even more. But as we sort of work together and sometimes we get along, sometimes we don't, we are a council family. You're looking at someone that has probably served with the most city councilors in the history of the city and people sort of tend to come, come and tend to come and go, you know, they work here, they spend some time here. You are, you sort of distinguish yourself and you're unique in a sense that we are truly, truly going to miss you and what you bring every day to this job. And again, best of luck to you and to your family. We have an addition coming soon, probably late summer, early fall, and we know for you and your family, the best of things are coming.
Thank you so much. Remember.
Get right in the middle. Get right in the middle.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.